We'll go ahead and get, ooh, my gosh. We'll go ahead and get started, if that sounds good. And I will start by calling the meeting to order, and then we will proceed. I think we only have one thing on the agenda, so we will just have that discussion. And then after that, of course, go into, you guys will be able to go into your meeting that you have here today. With that, I'd like to call this meeting to order. If the, if the clerk could call, roll please for the commission.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yep. Okay, very good. With that, I think we only have really one item. Like I said, this is a joint meeting of the Clay County Commission and the Bicentennial Commission. The subject we're going to be discussing is the event that would culminate with our bicentennial year. And so, well, we wanted to kind of get everybody together and have some conversation related to that. I don't, I don't really have a big agenda as far as where we start. We could start with the commission. If you want to kind of tell us what your thoughts are. Well, we could start with the county commission, but maybe it's better just to kind of for you to give us a bit of a summation of where we are, and then we can just start opening the discussion. And I think the way we're going to run the discussion is a little bit less formally than usual, so I'm not necessarily going to be, I'll try to keep the conversation going, but it's not necessarily going to be a call on people. I'd like it to be a little more freewheeling, so, you know, just as long as we don't talk over each other too much, I don't see too much concern about that. We'll try to get it figured out as quickly as possible, have the discussion, so that you folks can go ahead and have your meeting that you have scheduled for today. So, with that, if you'd like to go ahead and get started, and give us kind of an update.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, members of the commission and staff. It might be helpful to do introductions?
That's just what I was going to say, was, if you want to go around and just have everybody introduce themselves, I didn't encourage me. The other thing is, we have audio as well as the video recordings, so when you speak, go ahead and just state your name for the audio. So, go ahead and start with yourself.
So, I am Katie Steele-Danner, and I serve as the chairman of this commission, because I missed a meeting.
I'm Jane Putnam, member.
Risa Powell, member.
Jane Wigan, member and secretary.
Jerry Spencer, vice chair.
Terry Wilk, member.
Scott Cole, member, and also liaison with the Clay County Archives.
Jerry Nolte, presiding commissioner.
John Carpenter, commissioner.
Diana Wright, county administrator.
Sandy Baldwin, county clerk.
And Megan Thompson, commissioner.
And we will be joined a little later on by our county council. He got delayed, but I don't think we need to concern ourselves too much with legal matters right at this moment, so go right ahead.
Thank you very much. One of our members who's actually done the bulk of the work for our closing event is Julie Solia, and unfortunately, she is meeting today with the regulators who approve the casino license for her venue. So, she is the general manager for Harrah's, and also serves as the incumbent president of the Clay County Economic Development Council. So, I think you know her. I'm not sure that she's had a chance to come and speak before you, before, but she sends her regrets, and I know that she would like to be here to just give you a little bit of additional information, or answer any specific questions that you might have, because, again, she has chaired this subcommittee. That's really how we have been operating since we were formed last summer. We sort of divided and conquered what we had come up with in terms of what sort of our work plan here. And we originally thought that we would get really engaged and active with the State of Missouri Bicentennial, and we quickly realized that we were really formed to focus more on Clay County. And so, we did try to sort of add some enthusiasm to Clay County activities as a part of the State of Missouri's Bicentennial activities, including being here to welcome the governor. We did participate in the Scoops Across Missouri Celebration that was a part of the State of Missouri's Bicentennial Celebration around the square here. And that was very popular and fun, even in spite of the rain. And then we met, as an organization, sort of a working group, what, what should we do? You know, when we were formed, we were basically given the directive to amplify and celebrate 200 years of activity and triumph in Clay County. And so, we decided as an organization, as a commission, that we would have three signature events. The first event was sort of our kickoff event that many of you attended, that was held here in Liberty. Again, we had to reschedule it due to weather. We had some snow, or snow projected originally, with our first kickoff event, and that was very celebratory in terms of, here's what our plans are for the year. We introduced you to Clay, and I erred by not bringing Clay, but I am proud that one of our committees, that committee members, the two committee members who have led the mascot effort.
Were the ants.
You are the ants. I appreciate that very much. So, we introduced that idea with the hope that people would just kind of generate enthusiasm. Our second signature event took place just earlier this month, I think, was it in June?
Before.
Okay, so that was just this month. And that was, again, here in Liberty, and we partnered with the HDLI organization to open the time capsule that had been buried during the sesquicentennial celebration. And hopefully, you've had a chance to see the wonderful video imaging and the work that the Clay County staff did, and so many others, to unveil the contents of that time capsule, and the subsequent frustration, that, you know, it really wasn't something that had been preserved very well. And yet, it was a big celebratory event. Again, we had no idea who was going to be here, and because of that, we did it with a pretty low-cost budget. We didn't expend the money to have a stage, or banners, or even frankly, a professional sound system. We used the county's sound system, and relied upon a volunteer who came in on a Saturday to plug it in for us. So, we appreciate that very much. Then the third event was really based upon some research that members of the commission had done. What was done to celebrate the centennial of Clay County, and then what was done to celebrate the sesquicentennial of Clay County. And while we were amazed at the work and the effort that was involved, we found out that it was just too much. It was too vast for us as an all-volunteer organization to be able to pull off successfully. So, we thought, rather than doing a week-long activities, as they did just 50 years ago, to include parades and softball games, and people dressing in period costume, and a big event, hopefully, you've heard some of the stories about some of it, and people on horseback, and just a really large celebratory activity, that we would try to combine the sealing of the time capsule for, what's the word? I'm sorry, I have to defer to the word that you just learned.
Oh, for the semi-kincentennial.
Okay, the semi, so in 50 years. Semi-kincentennial, so for the future. You had, had before you the opportunity to bury a time capsule, and I think your vote was, we shouldn't bury it, which is prudent, given what we found. And so, we've done some research, including, the alderwoman has shared with us what they've done in Kearney for a box that is basically under glass within a shelter there. We've talked about, you know, having something within this building. What exactly is that going to look like? And then we have a subcommittee that's been working on gathering that activity, what would be included, how will it be gathered, all those types of things. But we thought our closing event would be quote-unquote "sealing" that time capsule. And then, we were sort of thinking that it would be a, carrying us forward. We're going to celebrate the last 200 years. We're going to celebrate the work that we've been doing basically for the last 18 months, or will have been by November. Invite people to remain engaged, and enjoy that living, working, and being involved in, and visiting Clay County is to be celebrated. So, we were talking about it being a flight into the future. That was even our original kind of goal, and we wanted to hold something at the downtown, what I think we all call the Charles Wheeler Airport. And then we found that there was a museum there, et cetera. Well, with lots of research, they're just not in a position to be able to host a large community event along those lines. So, Julie, and I think Jerry is on the subcommittee as well, actually put out a request, where are some venues that could potentially host us for this Flight Into the Future closing event? And they got dates and costs from many organizations. And we voted, with a report from the committee, that the Elms would be a perfect location for us for three reasons. Number one, they are one of the businesses that have been around for 100 years that we celebrated at our June 4th event. And they've survived two world wars, yeah, I mean, just the history, all the flooding, I mean, everything. And they gave us a bid that we felt was very competitive. They had the date available. They had adequate parking for multiple generations, including those that, you know, might need some assistance to get in, elder individuals, or even younger individuals. And they worked with us in terms of, you know, we don't know exactly how many people are going to come. It could be this number of people, or it could be this number of people, we just don't know. So, we agreed to do that. We worked with staff to bring it to you, because the Elms wanted a written contract, and I, they asked me to sign it, and I didn't feel that I could obligate the county to spend money. So, I deferred, and I worked with legal counsel and staff, and said, I don't think I should be the one that should sign any such contract obligating all of us. And so, that came before you as an opportunity, and I think the budget amount was, I think it's $25,000. Okay? So, we put that down as a not-to-exceed goal, right? It could be that the event is going to be much less than that. However, there is a performance requirement for food and beverage within the contract. So, if we don't meet that food and beverage minimum, the venue would charge us an event space fee. And you've done a lot of events, I mean, you got here because you've done events, right? You understand, this is just the way it's done. So, not knowing exactly how many people would be there, we're sort of thinking 300 as a top. We were hoping that there would be more than 100 people, but that brings us to the next problem, which is, we don't have a good mechanism for inviting individuals and then receiving RSVPs for, for individuals, for any of the events that we've done. We, we frankly, overbought food for the opening event that we had. We thought there would be more people. If you recall, it kind of got icy that night, too, so weather got in the way, unfortunately, but we just didn't know. So, when we ordered the little cupcakes, you know, we didn't go overboard, but we did have more than people attended, right? For the June event, again, we were part of another event, and it was multiple generations of people that were there, but we had no idea how many folks would be coming back that had been involved 50 years ago. And then, because we don't really have a mailing list, we've just been trying to capture emails and contact information for people that have contacted county officials, HDLI, your organization, many other organizations in the county, and we're, frankly, we just use a Google Doc to, to have an Excel spreadsheet of, here's somebody's name, and here's somebody's email address, that we use to send out an invitation, okay? So, at this point, I feel like it would be prudent for us to maybe try to partner with somebody that could help us with some of those logistics, so that we can extend an invitation. We want it to be county-wide. We want individuals not to be left out, and we want to ensure that every one of our communities is involved, so that it, it's not just all City of Liberty, or City of North Kansas City, or, you know, Eastern Side of the County, or Western Side of the County. We, we'd really like for it to be a large community event. So, I guess that's one of the asks, as we talk about, what are some ways to get there? Your input in that would be very helpful. And then, the, the third opportunity was, we saw this as a way to maybe right-size some of the discussions that have gone on in the recent past in the county, and also celebrate, you know, going forward. There will have been an election, new people will have been, you know, voted in to be able to serve as your team. And we're going forward, you know, we're going to celebrate 200 more years of opportunity. So, what's a celebratory way to do that, within the means and the logistics that I've kind of described to you? And in the meantime, you've gone through some staffing changes that we've been working with. The Elms has gone through staffing changes, so the people that wrote up the original contract are no longer there, and we have a new group of people they were working with. For instance, they just did a regular contract for us, and included room, like a minimum number of rooms that we would use, overnight rooms. And I pushed back and said, this is, really isn't an overnight event. Most of us, you know, are local. And so, I think in the final contract, they included that there would be 10 rooms set aside in the room block at a certain amount for overnight. And we were like, okay, well, as long as there's not a penalty if we don't meet that 10 rooms, right? But if anyone is interested in spending the night, of course, they want heads in beds. That's why they've been around for 100 years. So, we did include that in the final contract. So, I'm going into maybe a little bit more detail than you need to know for this meeting, but I thought it would be helpful to just give you some of where we've all come from, to lead us to here, and I know there's been pushback. What I've heard is that it's not to be a public expenditure of funds for a private event. It's not intended to be a private event at all. We just don't want to commit the county to some expenditure, and then we end up having 80 people there, and we've committed, you know, to have 200 people there. So, we just need to find a way to kind of close that logistical. If that's what we decide today that we want to do, you may, I know you've talked about maybe doing a, an ice cream social, or a hot dog contest, or just having an open house here. If that's what your preference is, then that, we'll come to consensus on that today. But I, hopefully, that's giving you enough background information to further inform you. The other thing I should say, we are more than willing to partner with anyone that is interested in partnering with us, as we did with HDLI. They helped us to, they used their mailing list, for instance, to encourage people to come to the unveiling of the time capsule. There may be other organizations that are interested in partnering with us. I think each one of us individually don't have staff or capacity to really run a large event like we'd like potentially for it all to be, so we would just need to find someone that would pick up that slack for us. And it could be a county staff person, it could be a private organization, another not-for-profit, another chamber of commerce, you know, school district, anyway. Anything else? Any other comments that you want to add?
Well, I'd, I'd like to say, I, I joined the Bicentennial Commission late. The plans had already been formulated for the event at the Elms. My initial impression was, this is going to create a perception problem for the commissioners. First of all, how do you settle on an invitation list? Second of all, how do you justify it? I think cutting to the chase right now is to find out, you know, how much money we would have to work with, and your thoughts on, on how we should go about doing it. Another thought is, perhaps wrapping, wrapping it around a fundraiser of some sort might soften the perception that people have.
Okay. Anyone else?
Okay, I have been asked to mention several things. My name's Jerry Spencer. I attended an event this past week for Clay County Savings Bank, which was number 11 of our businesses in our county that had reached that century mark. They just, boy, they squeaked by. Anyway, they planned a big event. They are one business, but they were celebrating 100 years. They planned a three-hour event, they had live music, they had free food, they put out a mass invitation to everybody and anybody who wanted to come. It was well-attended, they were out of food in 50 minutes. The beverages were also gone very quickly. But there were people there taking advantage of all the other things. The parking was perhaps an issue, some of those things. The only reason I bring it up is because kudos to them for wanting to celebrate, this is a huge deal. But perhaps, they could have done a bit more planning about guest list, parking, things like that, to have bumped it up. And I was speaking with a few of the people that worked there. A lot of the people that showed up weren't even people who banked there, but they brought their whole family for a free meal. Anyway, another point that I want to bring up is that historically, which is why we kind of landed on the gala thing, it has been a year-end gala. That is what our county has done historically. So, we felt that this was very much in line. Some of the things that we were thinking about at this gala is that we would recognize those century businesses, so obviously, they're on our guest list. We would recognize our photo contest winners. Again, they're also on our guest list. We would recognize all around the county, all these different places that did endorsed events, whether it was Atkin Johnson Farm in Gladstone, or the James Farm up in Kearney. We would also recognize all of them. So, even though we did not have a very specific guest list, we do have some very, very well-formed ideas about who that would be around the county. And we did want to, as Katie said, make sure we were very inclusive. Every community would be represented, and a variety of things that way. So, I'll leave it at that, and we'll let someone else speak.
Jane Putnam. I see everybody's side of it. I can sit back and see exactly where, you know, citizen out on the street might say something, but you're going to have someone be disgruntled in every group, in every situation. We all know that. Everybody's human. What is the idea of 200 years? How many places can celebrate and acknowledge that they have survived? And it's been a, an essential part of Missouri's history, Clay County's history. You know, Liberty's not just, oh, yeah, it's Liberty, Missouri, up by Kansas City. My gosh, this is historical spot. We have so much going on here. And, you know, that's still a little piece that I want to further work with, is getting the historical pointed out more. And like, you have to have a really nice, functioning, organized event in order to let everyone of what deserves noteworthyness be shown. We can't put out our photo contest, we can't put out the displays from the time capsule, we can't put out future time split, displays. We can't do that in just any old place. It's not that we're not willing. We'll do whatever, you know? We'll stand out on the street with a hot dog cart, but in December or November, it's going to be darn cold. It's just, it can't be done where you can just say, hey, anybody in Clay County, come over and get a free meal, just like happened at the bank. That happens at all, all the times, those places. People show up, free meal, I heard they're having food down there. We want this special. We'll never have another 200 years. We may not have 250 years. And so, if we don't take a stand and say, look, this is the way, this is a protocol, this is the way things are done, when you have such an important historical event to go down, and that's why, you know, we really need a nice place. Elms, I don't know, did we lose them?
No.
Okay, well, we haven't lost them. You know, we, some of us have talked, you know, we've got backup ideas in our head, but we, do we want this nice? Do we want it to go down in our time capsule that something really was nice? And there, there can be a way, we can work this out, where there can be all people from every background invited. Everything takes money. If that's the big issue with some people, then maybe we can work around it, but we shouldn't have to. I mean, there are many other events that go on within cities and counties and places that it is tax dollars that are used. You can't get past that. So, I just ask that we can come together and work this out, and, and get some decision done, because you can't plan something like we tried to do, and shuffle in two weeks and come up with standing on the corner with ice cream, and, and try and to deal with snow, and rain, and sleet. I, you know, three different trimes to try to kick it off. And if we don't get the interest out there now, we're not going to have anything later. So, I really appreciate your time, and, and thinking about it, you know, we've, it is for everyone's benefit, but we want to make it right, too. So, thank you.
Oh, did you want to say something?
I'm, I'm so new on the commission, I've, this is maybe a week and a half, so all of this, I stepped into not knowing what was going on. My name is Risa Powell. So, my opinion right now, I, it's very difficult for me to form one. It's kind of, I can see both sides and all sides of this. I can understand how some individuals, some people might think that we're using the taxpayer money for our own aggrandizement and having a fun party for us, but that's not the reasoning behind this, I believe. I, we are wanting to celebrate and commemorate the, our 200-year anniversary, and I, I'm kind of at a loss for words right now, because I'm kind of jumping in feet-first in this, and I'm, it's a little over my head at the moment to form a definite opinion and consensus. Thank you.
We appreciate your willingness, though.
Just like Scott. Oh, and now she's swooping in six months after the bet. Oh, but she's willing, you know?
Jerry Nolte. I think, the thing is, we, you know, we do want you folks, and we, we got, we brought you together because you are very talented people, and you've got a lot of diverse skillsets in the whole, in the whole thing. I think that we gave you a good budget, which you have stayed well within. I think there's two issues that we have right now. One is that the clock is ticking. Tomorrow is July 1st, so we're going to be that much closer to the end of the year. The second one was, I don't know that we gave you the degree of direction that perhaps we should have in retrospect. We may, should have been a bit more focused, which is kind of what this is about. What I, for me, what the goal is, coming out of this and any other subsequent discussions, is to make sure that whatever is proposed is something that everybody can, can live with, and it will not, you know, be set aside. And a, a third plan, to be quite honest- And a, a third plan, because quite honestly, I don't think we have time for a third plan. But what I want to do is open it up to the other commissioners. And, and we, I think what we need to do that might be most productive, at least initially, is to give you folks an idea of what, you know, what maybe the expectations of the commission are so that you can say, oh, okay, well, we're clearly on the wrong track here or we're on the right track there. So I'll just open it up to, to the commission. And, and if you guys have some comments or something that you'd like to, to either state or if you'd like to give them some direction on what, what you're feeling, what you may feel uncomfortable about or whatever kind of gets the conversation going, please just jump in.
I'll just, I'll jump in, okay. I'll put my coffee down. I've been drinking some of that for a while. So I will go ahead and start and say that I haven't been in the same room with all of you at once, except for at some of the events, but you guys are doing a terrific job. And this whole year, the events have been phenomenal. And I've enjoyed attending them with my family and, and seeing all the, you know, the excitement of our 200th year celebration for the birthday of Clay County. So with that being said, I think your guys' event for the Elms looks wonderful. I just had a hard time justifying to people $50 to $70 a person event. So, but I know we can come up with a way to make everybody comfortable. We did just re, you know, we had to reallocate $300,000 for fuel budget for our highway department. And then I have citizens who come to me and say, why are we throwing elite parties? And I'm trying to tell them what it is and what's going on. And I know there's a way we can do this where everybody can be happy. We can celebrate this very important date here for Clay County and this whole year and really wrap it up and make it special. I, I'm not trying to be a pain. I'm not. But I have, that, my job is speak up. But you guys are doing a phenomenal job, and I know we're going to come up with a good solution, so. So I don't know if we need to look at, maybe if we want to continue with the, with the Elms event, if we want to sell tickets. So then it's not necessarily a cost to the taxpayers for, for a limited number of people. I'm open to doing whatever we can to, if we want to do a different event. I'm, I'm very open. We could do even at the lake. We have Smithville Lake. If we did fireworks and had a band. I don't hate putting out food for, if they're Clay County citizens, I think they should come and eat our food. They should. Bring your family. Come out, watch the fireworks, rent a boat, enjoy it. We can hand out cupcakes. But then that's for everybody. But even selling tickets to, to a more closed event is, is, I'm comfortable with that. If it kind of helps loosen some of that, you know, taxpayer funds up to not for private, a private dinner, so. But I'm also open to all ideas. And if you guys have any questions for me, but that's basically where, where I'm at on this right now.
Megan, this is Jane. This is Jane Wigan. Goes back to one of our concerns. The lake in November is not feasible.
Exactly. No, and that's why-
So that's one of our problems is, for an year-end event, we almost have to have it inside someplace. And when we did our research, if you go to a venue, then we end up having to pay quite a bit. And then food, like at the Elms, we had no choice about food. We have to use their catering, as you're probably aware. And so there, the, you know, we don't have an option of having a cheap food option. And we're also, if we go to an event venue, most of the time, we are limited as far as size of that capacity. And so we're dealing with those issues too. And that's what, avoiding, you know, some, when the bank example was, theirs was outside. So they could have, and, you know, deal with possibly unlimited people coming. But we can't exceed the capacity of wherever we do have it. Not saying we can't have it at a cheaper event and then, you know, I'm going to say, bring in hot dogs. I don't know what, what possibly we could use. And we say, maybe a community center someplace, Gladstone Community Center or something. But it's just replanning. And that's part of our team's frustration because we've been talking about this since, for almost well over nine months now. And have presented it to, we've told it the, the city council, I mean, I'm sorry, the county council commissioner, that we've been planning three events all along. So, and that we had budget, you guys had given us a very good budget to do, use. So that's why we were, but anyway, we're, we can still adapt. It's just trying to figure out how we can adapt it to what you guys all want. And consequently, and the fact that we are volunteers and some of the key people that were working on this are very much involved in their businesses too. And so we may have to just hunt, trying to find some other people to help us.
John Carpenter. First of all, I just want to thank everybody for doing this. I know everybody's volunteering their time, and you have my sincere gratitude for doing that, to help celebrate Clay County and its 200th anniversary. You know, I think top line for me is, the most important thing is, is achieving some form of consensus. You know, I, I think it would not be to anybody's benefit in this room or, or really anybody in the county to have this, you know, be some kind of controversial thing that, you know, could perhaps even generate news coverage of it. You know, especially just given the history of Clay County government and the previous commission and all the, all the ways we ended up in the news for all the wrong reasons. That's my top goal, is, you know, not doing anything to, to revisit anything like that, especially when you look at the national climate and all the divisiveness that, that exists. I don't want us here at the county, especially when this is supposed to be celebrating our community. And so, so that's my top goal, is, is achieving some sort of consensus that everybody can get behind. You know, I didn't want to do anything at the commission level that would be like some kind of split vote or something. I, I just think that would be the wrong way to move forward. Before we attempt to, to solve everything, I, I do think that some sort of open invitation is probably necessary. And I, and I understand the potential logistical challenges of that. But I, I think we would be hard-pressed to do an event in which only certain people were invited from the county and others were not. And that doesn't mean that I have the answer of how we can do an open invitation in an inside event and make that work. I hope that there is a way to do it. In terms of contact lists, and I don't, you know, maybe county councilor, our county administrator would be able to answer this. I know, for example, that the assessors department has a very large list of emails. Many, many thousands of emails of Clay County and all Clay County residents. So I, I don't know if legally that lists, that email list can be utilized for some kind of invitation to a county event or not. But those lists potentially exist, is, is what I would say. In, in terms of, I, I don't have any personal preference as to what the, the event is specifically. I think if we can achieve an open invitation, that that would be important. And also doing an event that everybody can agree with so that we can move forward, you know, with the united front and. So those are my goals. Thanks.
Well, let me, let me just speak a little bit to the open invitation, just by way of history over last year. When we had the opening event and even the event on the 4th, we sent an invitation to contacts that we had within each city government. So maybe we had the name of the mayor or we had the name of any staff member. But our hope was that we would send the invitation to that individual, and then it would get shared with the rest of the city council or the rest of the staff that were there. And what we, at the chambers of commerce, we have the executive, you know, maybe a staff person there. Hopefully, they would share it with the rest of their board, maybe even share it with all of their membership. And that didn't happen. And, and so we were somewhat, you know, upset that it, we found people afterwards that were like, how come I didn't even know this event was happening? Well, because you obviously aren't on Facebook, right? I mean, right? It's just so hard now. There's not a written publication that everyone is reading every day, although they have been good partners with us to share the photo contest and people hopefully will still enter. But there's just not way, one way of being able to communicate anymore. You, you all know that. It's just a challenge for us. So I don't know, maybe we could split the difference here. We did talk about selling tickets. I, I'm not going to accept money from an individual. I don't have a banking account on behalf of the Clay County Bicentennial Commission. We did talk about maybe using another organization as a treasurer, basically. And I think that was HDLI that we talked about very early on, wasn't it? We just, we haven't done that. So if we sold tickets, I think we could do that. We could probably get there. That would be a way of people RSVPing so that we would know, you know, what is the number that's going to be there? I'm doing an event in 19 days. And today, I had six people say, can I bring my spouse or can I bring my kids that are going to be in town or my grandkids that are visiting the Midwest? And I'm like, yeah, but I had to guarantee the numbers a month ago because of supply chain and venue space and, you know, all of those things. So there are going to be challenges with all of this. It may be that there is an organization, again, like HDLI. I know some people have talked about maybe working with some of the unions. UAW has a big presence here. You know, it's going to be in November. I mean, they're going, we're, we're not a part of their strategic plan at all. This would be a new opportunity for them to get involved. I have no idea if they would be willing to even do that. So I, I think we're all wanting to be celebratory and wanting it to be a nice event that is inclusive to everyone. And we don't, extending an invitation to everyone doesn't mean that's only the people that can come, right? I mean, if your grandkids are in town visiting for the weekend, bring them. But we have to have a way of kind of figuring that out. And the other thing that we have talked about, by the way, is just getting sponsors. You know, that we go to companies and say, this is our cost. Will you pay for, help us pay for that? And we don't use any county funds. And yet I feel like there are some resources that are available to kind of help us get where we want to go. So it's just making it happen. I think, I don't think anybody's in disagreement. I think it's just an issue. I did want to say two, two clarifying things. We did contact the Elms after your last commission meeting and told them, give us the right of first refusal, if possible, for that particular date. It's a Friday evening in November. If you have someone else that would like to use the venue, please sell the venue, make money. But we want you to know that we haven't reached consensus yet. And we have not heard from them that they have someone else that's trying to get in. So the Elms is still available. I did also reference, and then I look back at Julie's notes. There is, it's, the room rental is only $1,000. I mean, only, I mean, it's not horrible for a venue. But the food minimum is $14,500. And I think the way the contract's written, if we don't reach that $14,500, then they will charge us an additional $1,000, okay? So maybe instead of having a plated, seated meal, we, you know, have hors d'oeuvres or, you know, buffet or, you know, and that maybe is, maybe we're not going to get to the $14,500. We'll have to pay that $1,000 fee because of course they have to pay their staff and the cleanup and, you know, trash and all of those things. So I don't know. I'm, I'm talking without having spoken to my commission, but is that something that would be more agreeable?
One of the things that occurs to me is that we charge for that. That two, two problems come to mind. One is, we are going to, there's going to be a degree of accounting that has to be, you know, if you take in a dollar, you're going to show where the dollar went. There's going to be a tremendous effort involved in that. Secondarily, depending on what it gets charged there, we, we come back, right back to where we were before, which is, well, yeah, but I don't have 20 bucks a plate and I got five people in my family. It's 100 bucks. We can't do that. And once again, we fall back into that trap of elitism, which I think is, I don't think that charge is founded. But there are always going to be people, as was pointed out, who are going to be naysayers in, in any of these kinds of things. Thing is, we had this, I think one thing to keep in mind is this commission allocated, what, 80, 80, 85,000? And you've spent a fraction of that. I can see where, where- Well, the thing is, what we were communicating to you was, you know, here's our budget, and you can spend up to that amount of money. And we've kind of yanked your chain a little bit on this. I don't, no, we didn't mean it. But here's what occurs to me is, if you're going to do this, and, and this is maybe a good, bad, or indifferent idea, and that is to make it a ticketed event, but the tickets are free. You've got to get a ticket. You've got to, you know, we put up an email address. You've got to get them and they are, you know, you've got to provide an address. So we're making sure we just make county people as possible. So if your goal is, say, 300 people to show up, and that's what you base your food order on, then you do maybe 200 that are in advance. And then you're going to have to have some available at the door because people are going to show up with their uncle who just came in from Chicago. But the thing is, that takes away the whole idea of the bookkeeping and the money thing. You're just emailing, you know, they email, yeah, we'd like these. And they provide an address and you shoot them back the tickets. And there is no money exchanging hands. The other part of that is if there is some success in getting sponsors. Say XYZ company comes in and says, we think what you guys are doing is pretty dang swell. We're going to give you $5,000. That $5,000 goes against whatever it is, the expenses for this particular event. And maybe they get a, you know, a little shout-out. They get up something on the program, whatever. But the point is, that then offsets that cost. To somehow think that we're, that we're going to be doing this thing, you know, we're, we're not going to stand on the corner with hot dogs, you know, and, and, you know, three people with a, with a hot dog stand is not a bicentennial celebration. And I'm sorry, it just, it's going to cost us some money. And we run the other, if we don't, if we aren't able to pull this off or if we pull it off and it's real tacky, we run the other, we run the other risk that I see, and that is Clay County can't find its butt with both hands. And to tell you the truth, a county this size, we ought to be able to pull this off. It's not rocket science. I mean, you folks are doing great work, and I don't want to minimize what you're doing. It's hard work and it's complicated. But at the end of the day, this is not, we're not curing cancer. So I, I think we need to be thinking in terms of, how do we do this? How do we make what would be, what I threw out there was just one example. That is a good faith effort to say, yes, we're not spending all this taxpayer money. We're trying our best to keep the taxpayers whole. But I mean, you know, how many 200th anniversaries do you have? I mean, you know, I was just talking to my wife about our 50th wedding anniversary. Now, again, this is private money. She's not talking about going over to McDonald's and getting some hamburgers. That's not really going to work for a 50th anniversary, at least not if I want to see a 51st. So I think, I think we need to be thinking a little bit bigger. We can't be grandiose. We can't be exclusive. We can't be elitist. However, that doesn't mean it can't be nice. It doesn't mean we can't be, I think, responsible on, on the funding. And like I say, the thing that, that I, I want to make sure is that, that you, you folks understand that we absolutely appreciate the, the effort you've put forth. I don't want you to think that it was just, meh, no, we don't want to do that. And that's why it's important that we work through what we have here. So the next time that, that we have this come before us, we're all pretty well on the same page and saying, yep, you know what? This is great. This is great. Anyway, that's, for what it's worth, that's an observation that I would have, whether you go further and you have an entertainment, whether you have this, that, or the, I think, I don't know. I, I would like us to walk the line as far as the commission goes between micromanaging and, and just saying, hey, you're on your own, folks, have fun. We've, we've got to find that middle ground a little more effectively than we have up to this point. So I don't, just throw that out there as, as some suggestions. And I, you know, we've got to, I, I think we've got some more time. We can certainly, I don't want to, this shouldn't drag on endlessly, but I, I think we're, we're at the point now where we can start maybe getting a little more substantive. And I think a lot of it's going to be that you guys have direction from us as far as what we think, what, what, what our vision is and what your vision is, and try to bring those, those two together, which unfortunately sometimes can be a tall order. But if we have this conversation and perhaps a subsequent one, not quite so much so. And the last thing is, I, I, I think we need to make sure that you guys are getting the support from the county. I think, I think you've been getting support from the county. But I think, you know, we need to make sure that our communications are clear so that if you, I, I think there was some issue about getting an email address or something. Once again, we're not climbing Mount Everest here. It's, an email address is not, is, I'm sorry. I don't, I mean, I don't mean to say that sarcastically, but it's, it's not a difficult thing to do. So I can't help but think it is somehow just a miscommunication or somehow wires got crossed. Because we, we want to help you. We want to be there for you. And there are things that we- we can do. We just need to have a little closer communication. And we also had, I think, one of our main people who was interacting with you went on to another opportunity. So that was, again, a break in that communication chain. So it's a little like a perfect storm that we've been experiencing, but we need to get through it all the same. Anybody else?
Terri Welk. Question for the commission. Would you be more comfortable if we were able to push the decision on who could attend from different communities? To let them weigh in on, you know, maybe it's the people that volunteer in their community, maybe it's their, you know, best student, or there's, if there was some way that we could engage the various communities to provide people that could be invited? I mean, it still seems a little exclusive or, but, but still, you, to open it up to everyone in Clay County just seems extremely unrealistic. And I personally feel like we will not be successful. And one of the frustrations I think that Katie expressed earlier is just to get the leadership of our county, the different communities in our county, engaged in this whole process. I mean, we've had very little, that I'm aware of, very little support from, we have some businesses that have partnered with us that have helped us get where we are with our photo contests, for example. And, you know, that's encouraging. However, like Katie mentioned, we sent an invitation to the mayor of XYZ community, but for them to not even think to share it with someone? So, you know, maybe, maybe my ask is unrealistic, that they still would not, you know, the people that are concerned about us spending money, and believe me, I'm aware of the wasteful spending. So, you know, I've been all about that. But still, this is a very important thing. If we could at least focus it on something that, you know, the volunteers of the community, the, like I said, some way to engage each community in some way. They all have celebrations throughout the summer, throughout the rest of the year, all the way into the fall, like Glad Fest and those kinds of things. There has to be some way that we can engage them. Maybe you have a lottery, maybe you have a raffle, maybe you have some way to figure out, you know, there's X number from each community that get a chance to be, attend. I don't, it just seems like there ought to be some way we could narrow it down, not make it a free-for-all, because I just don't feel like that's going to be successful. Just my two cents.
I have a question for Commissioner Thompson. Do you think the twenty-five thousand dollar amount's going to be a problem regardless of how we put together an invitation list or open it up?
So the money has been budgeted. I understand that, and that is fine. So I'm very much for all the, you know, I stood up for wasteful spending in county government, so I will, I will stand by that. I think we do need some kind of celebration for the year end of our two-hundredth year of Clay County. I think that is very important. I think it's how we do it is important. I think we're all on the same page, like we want to make sure it's inclusive. We want to make sure that nobody feels left out, or somebody's like, man, you know what, I really would have loved to go to that. And, but I was number three oh one and I, so I can't go to that party, I can't come and celebrate. So I don't know, I don't have the answers on how to do this, I don't. And I am regretful that we didn't, we couldn't have these conversations before now. Maybe we could have come up with something, even we moved it to beginning of October or the end of September, and we could do an outdoor event. And even if we did invite everybody in Clay County, not everyone in Clay County is going to come, but I know it is still a big event and it's, that's a lot to undertake and try to figure out all the logistics. But I still think we're still in that same boat where we're still trying to figure it out, and I don't have the answers to it. But I'm, I'm here with you to help you figure it out and I will do whatever I can to get us where we need to be to that point.
Okay, so I just have so many thoughts running through my head right now. We've been at this for over a year and we do take minutes, they are posted. So everyone has been aware of what we've been doing and what our thoughts were, what we were planning. Anyway, we'll move past that. I do kind of like Jerry's idea. If there are approximately twenty cities, townships within our county, what if we give each of them ten tickets? They choose. It's out of our hands. They choose. Maybe it's their volunteer of the year. Maybe it is someone who's retiring. Maybe it is the student of the year, their valedictorian. There are so many different areas that it could be, but then it will be their choice, out of our hands, and those are a done deal. And then those other hundred tickets, we can acknowledge our century businesses, we could acknowledge some of the people that have actually helped and participated and been there and working this year to help celebrate. I just don't want us to go down in history as, wow, that group, those people there in Clay County, they did not do a very good job of celebrating or recognizing the huge milestone that this is. And we don't want to be that person or those people, I don't think.
Jane Putnam. We couldn't go into September and much of October to do this because then we have, we have Liberty's end of, you know, end of September, we have Gladstone's October, you have other communities, September and October is just kind of out, you know, for us to try to do something then. That's why we had to move into November if we want to do anything. And I don't want this to sound wrong and I don't want it, I do not mean it, mean it all, but if we just decide, maybe this just isn't something that isn't a part of what we need to do, and turn it back to the county to take care of it and let, let you all figure out what's going to be best for everybody and see how you're going to make the whole county. You know, that's kind of how we've been felt. It's like, okay, we were supposed to do this, now we're not going to do this, okay, now we should do this, but everybody should be happy. And there's, it can't, just doesn't work like that. So what do you want?
In this case, we are the.
Well, yeah, we're supposed to be, you know, we, we so are in to do this and, and we're willing to, but, you know, sitting here, we're all been saying this, well, I know there's a way, I know there's a way. What can we do? If there's a bridge, am I going to go over that bridge like it is? Am I going to wait till it gets rebuilt? Am I, or am I going to find a way to get around it? I don't know. I don't want us to go down the tubes as, wow, they, that was really kind of cheesy, you know? And I think this county is looked upon from other counties and the state. And if we do something that's just, oh, boy, you know, they'll go, is that the best they can do? And that's not what we want either. And if we start leaving it back to count the cities to give us input that they haven't done in the past, you're getting exclusory as well when you say, give us your person who won this. You've got this other kid who can never win a thing. That's the kid that ought to be able to come. So that's not a good thing either. I, I don't know. I mean, I want to do something, but we just got to quit spinning, you know, it's not a mud afon, you know, so. Thank you.
This is Jane, I'm going to put in one, two.
It's Jane, one.
Jane, yeah, I'm sorry, this is Jane Wigan. Just bouncing that off of this, one of our issues is we do need to wrap up the whole That's because we need to do something with the time capsule and we need to finish up the photo contest. That's the only two things we absolutely have to finish. The rest of it is icing on the cake for us. But, and I've, and we've gone through, you know, Lexington, Missouri just had their bicentennial last weekend. Thank heavens their time capsule came out good. I was watching it as, to see what would happen. But anyway, you know, if the, and because we're running out of time to do other stuff, we only have, we don't have a whole lot of time and, and we're also running out of time on venues. It was very difficult for us to even get the Elms. That was one of our challenges when we were looking for spaces. Believe it or not, most weekends are already booked in November and December. Those are, that's holiday party time besides weddings and everything else going on. So depending upon what we do, but we don't have to do anything. We can just close it. And we can, since we're not bearing the time capsule, we can put stuff in it, we're going to be collecting it from a variety of sources. We can put stuff in it, we can put, we can seal the time capsule up, put it in its place and say, good luck next, next group. You're going to get some people to bitch about that too, because there's people that bitched that we didn't open the whole time capsule originally, you know, in front of everybody, which would have been a disaster in itself. But anyway, you know, I'm just going to say that we can not even have a, yeah. And you won't get a whole lot of, I would say, many of us will say, fine, we can go about doing all, everything else we volunteer for.
Well, let me just ask, any closing thoughts for us? And then I think we're going to, we appreciate your time and interest and time of the staff. Is there an opportunity for someone on the staff to actually be, for instance, if we had people RSVP, is there someone in the county that could take an RSVP from individuals? Like that could say this person's coming and they're bringing three people?
Well, I'm going to think that there's some software out there, you know, we all go to conferences and RSVP and register, so, you know, we can look into some kind of, we prefer it be done online, because if you ask if they called in.
Sure.
You may not have that capacity and we prefer to have that record now. We also know that we have a lot of residents that really don't like computers.
Oh, I know.
We figure out a way to help them through that process. But, you know, we can certainly explore some options for that for RSVP, whether it is just, you know, I'm RSVPing and I'm reserving my spot, or I'm RSVPing and there's a fee associated.
Right.
So, you know, we can explore and have staff kind of take a quick look and see what kind of software we could purchase for a one-time event.
What, I'm not suggesting that we do this and I don't even think we have consensus. But if we did charge a fee, is there a way to, the county staff to take the fee?
Can I offer something here? I've been involved in several events like that. People around here are reporters, like, that I take, it's right.
If we have to commit, thank you, if we have to commit, you know, to a contract or something, I think that's going to be a problem.
I do think that you can split the difference, you know. Guarantee two hundred and then know there might be some, a ten percent overage or something, right?
But that's kind of what the county money is there for, is to back it up. I mean, we are basically guaranteeing it. I mean, am I reading this incorrectly in anybody's estimation, but we are saying, we will make good for it. If you have sponsorships or you charge the tickets or whatever, great, that saves us some of this money. But the thing is, you can't go forward and gee, I sure, I mean, if you don't sell enough tickets, where does the money come from? It's coming from us. We might just as well acknowledge that right up front, that what we're doing is we are guaranteeing what you guys will be spending with the hope that, whether it's through ticket sales, whether it's through sponsorships or whatever else. The other thing is, it does have to be kind of a nice event, because otherwise, who wants to sponsor a Sherlock event? Nobody. One of the things, and it's still kind of an open question, I think we need to give you guys an absolute answer on, we've got three alternatives on this. We can, we can continue tasking you folks to put this together with feedback and with support. We can do it ourselves as a county, we can just forget the whole thing. All three of those have been put on the table. I think two things, we need to come out of this thing either saying, we are taking one of those three doors. The other thing I think we need to come out of this is, we will, we will try to have something together that we can jointly agree on by a, maybe not date certain, but certainly with some kind of a target date, because the clock is ticking, it has to happen. There's no way you're going to sell sponsorships, you know, three weeks out from the event, ain't going to happen. So I, those are the two things I think we need to do, is we need to commit to supporting what you guys put together, obviously with your input, or you guys kind of round it off to where you've got it and the county takes it over, or we just say, you know what, a nice idea, but it ain't going to happen. So I, I think we need a sense from the commission of exactly what it is we're going to do, because these folks are busy. We're being, you, the three of us are on the clock right now. We're getting paid for this. They are not. We need to give them a definite yes, no, or whatever. And then I think, like I said, we need to come up with something realistic, and it doesn't have to be right now, but we have to start committing to timeframes of when tasks will be done. And I know you guys are very familiar with it. I don't mean to say that in a way that does not respect what you've been doing, but I think it's going to require a mutual benefit on our part as a commission to say, yes, we recognize that you need to have the commitment from us and the green light from us by X date. So I mean, we need to start setting, we need to start disciplining ourselves here a little bit if we're going to have this thing across. And I'm talking about disciplining, I'll just say, myself as a commissioner. I think I need to be committing to a, you know, a certain timeline, otherwise you folks are, are, are out there in kind of nowhere.
Eighteen weeks out, four and a half months, eighteen weeks from target date. The budget took us out of being fundraisers, now we're fundraisers.
That's another really good point, because that was the idea behind, originally behind that. And if we had, if sponsorship got to be a thing, that would be great, and it would give you extra working capital. I don't know, I'm not sure if that was ever contemplated to have you guys be fundraisers. Some of the people involved in the committee have the ability to tap into that community, that would be great. But the thing is, how much are we going to put on your plate? Plan the event, get the logistics, sell tickets, get people there, and oh, by the way, raise the money for it, and, you know, we'll come in and wave to the people. Not really.
Show them that.
Yeah, well, I'll work on that one. So, that being said, I think we need, I think we need consensus from the commission. Where are we going, guys? Are we going to, are we going to support the board? Are we going to do it ourselves? Are we just going to say, nice idea, but not, not this year? What are we going to do?
So I agree that achieving some clarity moving forward from today is important. What I would say is to reiterate what I said before, which is that unless the entire commission can agree on something, I think moving forward or attempting to move forward with some kind of split vote is not a good idea, and I wouldn't support moving forward with a, with some kind of split vote here. And so while I agree that achieving clarity is an important thing and, you know, to respect everybody's time, I mean, if you've got an idea for how we achieve getting all three commissioners on board, then, you know, I would gladly support that as well. But if, but if we don't have that idea, if, then I don't, I don't think that the right solution is to move forward with some kind of ununited front. So if we can't achieve a united front, then yeah, we've got to look at the other two alternatives, which is either to not have an event or to have the county take it over, right? But I just, the most important thing to keep in mind for all of us is, you know, the goal here is to celebrate the bicentennial. I know we all share that goal. And I do think there's a real possibility of this if we were to move forward with some kind of split vote. Being a divisive thing on social media, I think potentially news organizations could pick it up. And I just can't imagine that any of us would, would want that outcome that we would then have to live with for the next several months leading up to the event. So I think, I think that's the one thing we have to not do, right? We have to not come out of here moving forward with something that not everybody can agree on. And so I'm open to ideas. I, I'm just saying that that has to be the thing that happens. Or, or like has been mentioned, we can look at not doing the event. But, but I really think it would not be wise to move forward with an event in which some folks agree that it's a good idea and others don't. I just, I just think that's the worst case. I just, I just think that's the worst case scenario, and I wouldn't support doing that.
Well, I was saying, we, but I mean, I think we have to say, yes, we are committed to working with them and bringing it to fruition. One of the things that when I was in the art business that just struck terror in my heart, and it did not work this way when we were working on Clay, just so you know, was you would, I would have a client, I'm designing a logo or something, and they would, I would, I would give them a couple of dozen versions, and they'd say, "Not really." I said, "Well, what, what do you want?" "I don't know what I want, but I'll know it when I see it." I've been on the, I've been on that side of enough of those where I really don't want to put you folks in that kind of a thing. And while I respect Commissioner Carpenter's view that we should go forward, and I think the ideal is to have a united front, split votes don't scare me particularly. They don't bother me.
And I respect, I respect that. I'm not going to move it forward with a split vote. So that's my view on this. I think it would guarantee a month's long controversy that would play out on social media and in the news, and I don't think that that would be a good idea for anyone. And so I'm not comfortable moving forward with a split vote, even if you are.
And to tell you the truth, at that point, it, it becomes, the story is no longer the event the story is, controversy on the commission, and I do get that, and you are totally right.
That's the thing to avoid, in my view.
Having lived through like five years of that, yes, I am extremely sensitive to that. Commissioner Thompson?
No, I, I think you both bring up really good points. We need to give our, our commission here a path to move forward. What does that look like? And how do we not make this controversial, which it shouldn't be, because it's a party, we're having a party, and having fun, and doing something important and special? So I think it would help me if I knew, like Jerry, Commissioner Nolte, what's your position? What, what would you like to see moving forward in this?
I don't want to micromanage them. What I want to see is a, a, a nice celebration. I think the Elms is a really great idea for some of the reasons that were, that were mentioned. I think there are ways for us to make it not seem like an elite party. If we have to spend some money on it, we have to spend some money on it. I mean, we can't get by on 27 cents on a, on a bicentennial celebration. We need to have something nice. Otherwise, it's, it's, I'm not saying go big or go home, but it's a little bit of that. If it's not going to be nice, if it's not going to be something that we can proudly say, "Yes, we're there," if it's something you don't mind having your picture taken and having it in the newspaper, maybe that's one of the tests. I guess what I'm saying is, what I'm asking for as far as the three options I laid out are, are we going to express some degree of confidence in this commission and, and have them go forward and look at some, at least rough date when we can have something we can all agree on? Because they're not getting very much direction from us, and we're not going to get anything unless we give them some direction. We can't just say, "No, that one doesn't sound so good. I don't like that idea. Come back. I don't know, but I'll know, I'll know what I want when I see it." We can't do this to them, especially on the timeline. And to tell you the truth, as I reflected in my business when I was doing that, I would bid to, to design a logo, and what I would do is that I built in a certain amount of those kinds of steps. There was a point I got to where I said, "Okay, folks, you know what? From here on out, the clock gets kicked on, and now I'm charging. These folks are not charging us anything. They're volunteers." I think we need to give them some expression of support and some expression of confidence that if they go forward with something that, that, that we can, and again, I realize I'm being rather amorphous about this, but we've got to give them some confidence that, that we are behind them and that we support what they're trying to do. Otherwise, let's just do it ourselves. What I don't want to do also is second guess and micromanage them. I, I think they're getting, we, we need to express what our reservations are, and at least tell them what we don't want. And I still feel as though, I think we're, I think we're making progress, but we, we need to be more focused. In fact, I would suggest that it's not a bad idea for us and ourselves to be attending their meetings and give them some kind of immediate feedback. At least at that point, if they did something, they would have someone on the commission who is an advocate for what their position was and had a feel for what the other commissioners were. But like I said, we're, we're running out of time, and we can't just let them go, go on in the dark like this. And I got to tell you, I, you know, we've lost at least one member that I'm aware of over this. We talk about controversy, I mean, what happens when these members start slowly drifting away because the commission is not supporting this board? We need to support these folks, or we need to say, "Thank you very much," and do it ourselves, or we need to just say, "Yeah, it's a good idea, but it's not going to happen." That's what I need a consensus on, I believe.
Thank you. And I, and I do agree that I would love to, I totally agree we ought to come out of this meeting with a consensus on one of those three paths. So no, no disagreement for me whatsoever. My only point is, if we're going to choose the path of moving forward with the event, that would need to be a united front, or we shouldn't do it. That's my only point. And if we can't achieve a united front, then so be it. That's not the end of the world. Like you said, we can either, you know, just do the remaining, you know, time capsule and that and not, and not do the event, you know? We would survive that. I just think that either we get consensus or we go that route. And again, I think the route to avoid is the route of moving forward and then having a several month-long controversy over this, because that's just, it's just, it's just, I, I think we would come to, to regret that, to let what should be a celebration of, of, you know, community has the word unity in it, right? And, and I think to let it devolve into anything other than that would be, would be a mistake. And so that being said, totally agree, let's, before we leave the meeting, let's choose one of the three routes and, and move forward accordingly.
I have a question. So can we, we talked about social media and how we're afraid of how this is going to be perceived on social media. Would it be beneficial to get in front of it and have Clay County Mo government Facebook page, you know, whatever we, you know, on the website, post something about it, and actually let people know what percentage of the county budget this represents? Isn't it like .00002? I mean, seriously, it's just a tiny amount of money. And I get why people, you know, and I know who we're talking about here, that freak out on wasteful spending, and I'm one of them. I was right there with them, fighting for the audit. So I get that concern. But it's all about messaging. I mean, someone has it in their head that their street's not getting paved, or, you know, whatever it is that's not happening, because we're spending $25,000 on a party to celebrate our bicentennial. So it seems if we had the capability, I'm sure there's lots of creative people in the county that could come up with the message that lets them know, "This is the percentage of the budget that we're spending. This is why we're doing it," and let people comment on that. I mean, isn't that what it's about? I mean, that's what social, if we're afraid of social media, why don't we use that to our advantage? To promote this and let them know why this is important for our county to spend the money this way? That's my, last of my two cents. Thank you.
What percentage, to your .00002, of those that are complaining out of the rest of a whole county? That's the one bad apple spoils the whole pushover. And I know as a politician, you have to think of that, but...
I think regardless of what decision you three come to, if it does, you know, if it is the Elms and we want to proceed with that, we really need to know right now. We're running out of time on that particular option.
We've wasted a lot of time. Should I turn in? And Terry turn in? And Jerry turn in? Should we start turning in our gasoline bills? Do you know how much extra places we can have? I know, but it's just like wasting county money.
Any other, I mean, any other comments from the, from the bicentennial?
I have a point of clarification that I just need to ask. I've been sitting here trying to think about it. Do you reserve a campground at the park at the lake? Like is, do county, so like, is there a vendor that does that?
For the campgrounds? Do you do that?
There's a staff that does that?
You can do it online.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I'm kind of going back to the, we're, we're going to extend the invitation, use social media, maybe even pay for some ads, buy mailing lists, use chambers, school boards, organizations' lists to extend an invitation. Here's your call to action. You respond this way, and I think that will assist us to figure out and tell the venue, which I think we all like, we'd like for it to be at the Elms. But if the Elm says, "Yeah, thanks, we've got another, we've got a wedding that's going to spend $100,000, and so thanks, we're, you're, we're not available anymore," then we go to some other, you know, a tented event at the lake or something along those lines. But those costs add up. I mean, literally.
You're...
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, you know, if we, we thought, you know, entertainment has been mentioned, we thought that would be great to get, but we weren't going to include that in our budget. That was going to be a sponsor, like, you know, the, the quartet is sponsored by Katie Steele Danner, you know? The, the, the dessert, you know, is sponsored by Clay County Savings Bank. I mean, you know, right? So we, we didn't really get into those kind of specifics, but I guess we could if that's direction that you're giving us. And again, that gets into a little bit of fundraising. So I think the time capsule idea isn't really going to be expensive for us. It's really more logistics, and I think some of the communication about the logistics of gathering the time capsule can also have an overlay of invitation to whatever this closing event is, right? So it's double messaged. But we just have to have a call to action so that we can plan. So I just, that was my question, you know? Somehow in the county, besides paying taxes, somebody can take money, right? So maybe that's the way we can do it, whoever the vendor is at the park.
Maybe the direction from us, just maybe simplify a little bit, is, are we okay with the Elms? Or are we not okay with the Elms? Does that come off as too snappy? Is this, because it's going to take money to do it. How, you know, if we ever recover it, we might. If we can't, I'm not sure it's, it's the money so much as the fact that it feels exclusive, as long as there is the opportunity for the general public to be there and either to get it, either, we're either going to subsidize the cost as a county to keep the cost low, or we will make it free with a certain methodology to where we don't end up being swarmed by, you know, 100,000 people who decide, "Oh, free, free food, let's go." There has to be some kind of a mechanism to slow that down, or it's going to be mayhem. But what, I, 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 these are not the kind of decisions I necessarily wanted to make, but I think we do kind of need to. Is the Elms okay, not okay? What's, what's the consensus of the commission then on that point, if we can go there?
I think the Elms is a lovely venue. My concern with it is, is I don't know how many people it can hold, max capacity, for all inclusiveness.
300.
Say 300 for, for all inclusiveness, for, for, for citizens. And when, because when people see the number of how people can fit into the building, how people we can have come to the event, and then you figure out how much then it costs per person, and it ends up being a $50 to $70 a plate person, that taxpayer money, that's, that's my stance of where it's, it's a problem. So, and, and like I said, this is a beautiful event, and if this was not taxpayer money going to this event for this caliber, which is going to be wonderful, you know, like if it was a private, like if this was EDC, or if it was, you know, Megan Thompson was having a party, "It's my birthday," you know, it's, I think it's wonderful. I just, I have a hard time justifying that to, to people, and when they call me and they email me, and it, I just don't think it looks the best to use taxpayer money for that much per person, if it can't be an all, like inclusive for anybody who would want to come, so...
So you're kind of an all or nothing, and I see your point. I, but there is no venue within our county that could hold that many people.
Well, so let me, again, just to clarify, we asked what the capacity was from the different places that we reached out to. The View at Briar Cliff can go up to 400 people. The Voodoo Lounge, which is a venue within Harrah's, I believe, can go up to 180. The Belvoir can go up to 300. The Elms can go up to 300. White Iron Ridge, it doesn't matter, because they're not available. So I think...
They're so busy.
And Belvoir, and then the Cable Event Center, oh, Belvoir is booked, too. That's right. The Cable Event Center, which is something in North Kansas City, can go up to 300, but then you have to use their outside caterers, approved caterers. And then Heritage Hall, which I think is just right here, is not available, and also it's not handicap accessible. So I think it's on the second level, and the only way you can get there is up steps. So that...
That's restoration.
Oh, I, I, anyway, I'm sorry.
They have elevators.
Restoration Hall, up to 275. I'm sorry, you're right. So anyway, we, the 300 is based upon the capacity of the places that we thought we could hold it. Now, what I think I might be hearing is you're hung up on an average dinner cost of $50 per person. We can change that by doing a different menu. We're already returning probably $15,000 to $20,000? I don't think we've even spent $20,000 yet. Yeah. So, I mean, we're returning a lot of money. So the question that you asked earlier was a really good one. Is it the $25,000 that you're opposed to? Is it the person, per person cost? Is it the Elms? Or is it just the whole idea?
I think it's the, the per person cost.
Okay.
And, and it's limiting who can attend.
Okay.
So can, sorry, so can I ask, maybe, if they went with the Elms and there was, the individuals charged for the tickets, right? So, and so the only thing the county would be paying for is the $1,000 for the room, and possibly if the food sales don't hit your contract amount, another thousand. So the county would be $2,000 would be the obligation. And it still would be going out, inviting anyone in the community that wanted to attend, but in essence, you would be paid to come and help and celebrate and watch the, you know, placement of the new items in the, you know, in the vault, so to speak, and be part of that and be part of history. Is, is that more doable?
I, I understand the logistics of that is, is a lot. I would be more on board with that. I know you guys are doing a terrific job, and this is a lot of work, and I have volunteered on many boards, and I don't want to task you with, "Go back and now you have to do all these other things and checkmark all these boxes," because I know that's a headache. I know. And I just don't know how for us to move forward. And I don't want us to be divided on this, but also I don't think it should be a split vote. But I'm also trying not to be a pain. I'm just trying to do what I feel is right with this situation. So it's like, how do we move forward? And I'm open to ideas.
I don't, I'm not, I'm not really sure what you want, because the thing is, if it's going to be $50 a person, we just say that's the, the price. We can work it down, but just as a working number. So we're saying, "Yeah, y'all come on down, celebrate Clay County." By the way, it's $50 a ticket. How inclusive is that? Not terribly. So I mean, we're, we're going to have to sort through this thing. And the thing is, at the end of the day, let's be realistic about this. If you're a no, John's going to be voting with you, and I don't vote because it's, it's a, there's no split vote. So there will be no split vote when, when, when a push comes to shove. It, it, you know, it, it, I hate to say it this way, but it kind of comes down to you, Megan. I mean, you're, you're the one who is, who is saying, "No." John was saying, "No split vote." I would like to go forward, and I'm, I'm really open to it. I mean, we, we have to get, you know, if we had more time, I would, I would like to be able to finesse this better. But what we need to know is, what is going to get you to a yes vote so that we can go forward? I mean, that's kind of, I mean, I'd, I'd hate to be, I'm sorry to be so blunt about it, but if time weren't pressing, I could be more subtle and more diplomatic about it.
Well, I wasn't going to assume that Commissioner Carpenter was going to vote for me, and the $50 a head person, it is different if you're selling tickets, because then it's not taxpayer money going for their dinner and they're at the event. So it is completely, it's apples and oranges. It is different. So, and I don't, you guys can call the vote if you want to. I'm, I'm not going to stand in your way, but I can't support something that I feel is going to be an issue.
We can't, we can't call a vote right now, whether, because nothing is on the agenda. I can, I can ask for a consensus of the commission, but I, we cannot hold a vote right now. Is that not right, Commissioner, Mr. Counselor?
There's no motion pending, no reservation pending.
Exactly. So we did not notice this up for vote.
There's just discussion.
This is just discussion. Yeah, so there is no vote.
Of course. What my point is, we could move forward in the direction of the event that's planned, and we don't have to put them through any more additional work, and that's not what I'm wanting for, for our commission here. That's not, so maybe it's best that we don't do a big event. Maybe that's in the best interest, that we don't. Maybe we just go ahead and package up the time capsule, finish our photo contest, and we will just, we don't do an event if we can't decide upon it, and it falls on me.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, they seem to want to work, but what we are giving them right now is that we don't know what we want, but we'll know it when we see it. We need to... I think they need a little more specific direction, because the idea of charging for them sets a whole logistical process into place, which is a lot more work that we pile on them to do. So, I... Can you flesh out a little bit about the... About what has come from... Because Katie was saying, so, is it the venue? Is it the price? Is it the overall cost to the taxpayers? I think we need to give some direction to them so they can come up with a coherent plan to put before us that would hopefully get a united vote. That would be the goal. But we can't have them come back before this commission again in an open meeting saying, "Here's our plan," and we say, "No." We can't really do that again. That pretty much ends it right there, as far as I can tell.
Jerry, let me add something. The question that started all this, we brought the contract to the... And the resolution for the contract. I think we brought it back in April. That's when we first brought it to the group, to the commission meeting. And that's when you guys, all of a sudden, we realized we didn't have consensus. We thought we did, but we didn't have consensus back in April. If there is no consensus to spend the money to sign the contract, if there's no consensus to sign that contract, or any contract with us to spend money, we can't go forward, because the fundraising piece comes afterwards, but we still have to sign that contract committing the county to X amount of dollars if we do it at the Elms.
You're right, because nobody's giving sponsorship money on... We think we're going to do this.
Yeah. But sponsorship money won't be available before we have to sign that contract.
Exactly. So, and just, and Mr. Counselor, correct me if I'm wrong. That contract would come before the commission. The commission would then vote to whether, to yes or no, authorize me to sign it. My understanding is I could not sign it without authorization of the commission, and to tell you the truth, I would not sign it without the authorization of the commission, even if I had that option.
When is your next commission meeting?
Next Wednesday.
Wednesday.
3 o'clock.
The six. It's a work session at 3 o'clock. May I ask the council something?
Yeah. Mr. Counselor, would you be open to a question?
If we have this party in the name of the Bicentennial Commission, and we end up doing all the fundraising so we can have a free party for the county, and something happens, who's liable? You didn't sign your name, we did. We 10 volunteers. Who's going to have liability for that?
But we're acting on behalf of the county.
We're acting on behalf of the county. Are you going to be...
Ask the question, Katie.
We, the commission over here, the volunteers, we decide, "Okay, we'll go ahead, we'll do this, and we won't really have the approval of the three commissioners." And we go ahead, and we have this, even though we're working on your behalf, and, you know, something terribly goes wrong.
Sure. Well, if it's not approved, county function is probably not going to be in the county's insurance. I think that's what you're saying, is it would not be a county function.
Yeah, but I...
I don't think we have that option.
Bicentennial Commission function.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, it's star function, and something goes wrong. You going to back us?
I think what she's asking is, if we take it out of the county budget and do it, we'd have to partner with another organization that would be the sponsor of the Clay County Bicentennial closing ceremony.
Not our county.
But that wouldn't... There's no force majeure... I mean, there's... You're not obligated for anything, but we're also not protected if anything goes wrong, unless you get even insurance, which adds to the cost. So, I don't think it's even doable. I don't know that we'd get consensus of the commission to even do that. So, does that answer your question, hopefully?
Yeah. That would be similar to what went on for our festival, our June 4th festival. That was HDLI's festival.
Right.
We just... The county gave... Provided the money, some $5,000 seed money to them, to help with the festival, but the festival was under HDLI's thing, and so, any liability, et cetera, and contracts were HDLI's thing.
But Counselor Graham, as appointed members of the Bicentennial Commission, aren't we an extension of the county and under their umbrella, more or less?
Yeah. You certainly didn't put them under the county. Absolutely. But I think in a situation like this, where I pick up there, there is no authority from the county to do an event. That's a little trickery situation.
But doesn't it take a signature by the commissioners before we can obligate to the contract?
Yeah, but the contract would have to be approved by the county.
Okay. So, at that point, we're under that umbrella, aren't we?
In that situation, yes.
Okay. Thank you. So, I guess what that means, though, is that if you're just saying, for the sake of argument, you guys were able to raise all the money from sponsorships, what do you need us for? You... I mean, if we're not providing logistical support and we're not supplying money, are we just the insurance provider at that point? So, I mean, that kind of comes back to the idea of spending money on this event. I mean, you know, it... And you kind of, we pretty much said it, and that was, "Hey, well, you know, we'll throw the party, we'll organize it, we'll pay for it, and you guys come and hang out." And that's... We're going to have to... We're going to have to belly up some money. I mean, it's just... That is just it, in my opinion. Otherwise, yeah, if we're not going to commit to some kind of financial obligation here, what the heck are we talking about? If we're not going to back you folks financially, at an appropriate level, whatever that appropriate level might be, is obviously a discussion item. But if we're not going to back you guys, what are we doing here?
So, if I could jump in, our county administrator suggested the idea of perhaps selling tickets. You know, as I mentioned before, our top goal is that we come out of the thing united or just not do it. But secondary goal is, you know, if it's not an open invite situation, and it is sort of a select group who get invited, I can tell you, from my perspective, it would ease my concern for it to be a situation in which those folks are buying their ticket, right? Because if it's only a select people who get invited, then they can pay for themselves rather than having taxpayers pay for it. And I'm... If, you know, that was suggested as the compromise, if that's the compromise, I will gladly vote yes, assuming both of my fellow commissioners will vote yes as well. My point continues to be that we've got to figure out a way for all three of us to get on board. I think that is potentially a way to do it. But if we don't... If we're not all three on board with that, or some other consensus idea, then let's just consider not doing the event, and that's okay. Like, we don't need to hang our heads low and be all depressed about that. We can move forward, knowing that we've celebrated the bicentennial and finished out the last couple of items. But again, I think the thing to avoid would be leaving this room with disagreement over the final decision. And so, if all three of us can get on board with an idea, I will gladly be on board with that idea. Like I said, I don't have a strong opinion about the event. I think the selling of the tickets, having people pay their own way, could help alleviate the concern about taxpayer-funded, private invitation event, because they would be paying for their own ticket. So, that's my suggestion as a compromise. I'm not, you know, it's actually not my suggestion. I don't want to take credit.
To me, it was just from what I was hearing from commissioners, to have the event at the Elm, I think that would be a way that could be agreeable to the commission. I'm hearing that if it's not that, then I'm thinking, I'm hearing from commissioners, it's probably not going to be the Elm's event. It's just kind of what... And again, I was trying to help get you all to sort of a consensus of what... And so, that's kind of what I was hearing, it's into the table. And I don't want to speak for the commissioners, but I think it's kind of likely you are right.
So, there's no way to do it where it could be like a raffle, or a drawing, or something like that? I mean, because it's really impossible to invite everybody, but you could certainly invite them all to participate in a drawing or a chance to attend.
Yeah. I'm personally very open to some kind of drawing or lottery system in which the invitation list wouldn't be a selective list, but rather open to the public, and then some lottery would determine it.
Then in your end states, you're thinking the drawing is for basically no cost to the individual to attend. The county will pay for that.
That is correct, because as I mentioned earlier, the amount of money we're spending is tiny in comparison to the county budget.
So, yeah, I'm open to a lottery. I'm open to folks paying their own way. I'm open, frankly, to whatever achieves consensus here, and if we can't achieve consensus, then let's just, you know, let's just move forward without doing the event. You know, I just... I think that's got to be the goal, in my view.
I think we probably need to start looking around at this, off. We're kind of, I think, you know, we're pretty much, I think, everything that's said needs to be said, but before we do kind of move on to your phase of it, so that we can kind of bow out. Is there anything left that anybody wants to close with before we adjourn at least the joint meeting part of this?
I do think it's helpful. Again, hopefully, the citizenry is paying attention, and they know that they can still enter the photo contest. We will be awarding prizes every month. I do think October 31st is the hard stop for the contest, so you get a chance to win every month between now and then, and you can enter as many times as you want, and we've really enjoyed those that have participated. Secondarily, we'll try to get word out about the time capsule and the vault and where it will be and all of those logistics, yet to be determined. And then, thirdly, any additional activities that anyone wants to be involved with. We are still accepting applications for an endorsement for any activities, and we could